Call our August 11th, 2020 Town Council meeting to order. We did have an executive session already this evening and are moving forward. With the invocation and pledge of allegiance, we'd like to ask Councilmember Scott September to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and our invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Ken Tram of New Hope Community Church. Pastor Tram, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much for the honor of being here. Let's pray. Lord Heavenly Father God, we are so thankful that you brought us together. And Lord God, we know that this is a trying time right now and we're still continuing to be patient as we're pushing through, God. And Lord God, we know that you're faithful when we continue to have faith and you bring hope for the hopeless. And so we pray that as leaders are leading and as discussions are happening and this agenda that's happening, that you're in it and you're a part of it, God. Lord God, Holy Spirit, just be in every single part of it. Open doors, close doors, and just really lift up just all the council members and the mayor here. Lift up this town to you. You blessed it so much already and we ask you to continue to bless it as well. Well, Heavenly Father, we pray this in your holy and mighty name, everybody says. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Tram. Appreciate that and all that you do in our community. That moves us to the roll call.
Sorry.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott September.
Here.
One.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
It's Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Oh, it is.
We get them confused sometimes. We have two Scotts.
Yeah, I just got a promotion. Wait a minute.
I had this problem with Bridgette before too. It does say Vice Mayor Scott Anderson. I just can't. Vice Mayor Scott Anderson, are you here?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Entes.
Here.
For Miss President.
Thank you Lisa. Appreciate that. That moves us to presentations and proclamations. We already did issue one over the summer, the proclamation declaring the month of August is Child Support Awareness Month and wanted to make you all aware of that. At this time, are there any requests from the citizens to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our consent agenda. Oh, we have one. All right. Let's make sure we get you to come down to the podium. We'll give you three minutes to speak and there is a timer that's going to go there and we'll have you fill out a comment card if you don't mind after the fact so we can make sure we capture you and your contact information. Please.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Councilmember Bill Spence, Councilmember Amy Entes, Councilmember Vice Mayor Scott Anderson. We've become good friends at this point. But Mayor Jen Daniels, Councilmember Young Kaprowski, Councilmember Scott September, and Councilmember Jared Taylor, salute you sir. My name is Boss Obayomi. I'm a citizen of Gilbert, a resident. I've loved this town and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. It's my first time speaking here, but I have something right up and I would just want to share with you guys what I think. So in the words of Martin Luther King, and he said, "An individual has not started living until the individual can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." I want you guys to know, our nation is currently at a precipice. The current social and economic issues in our country have only led to a more significant divide. There's a growing discord between the police force and growing racial tensions. Our town Gilbert is not exempted from these issues confronting our nation. The recent death of George Floyd has caused protest across the country. There have been protests in Gilbert as well, as you guys know. Gilbert is a great town with a great community, with a great community feel. We have a reputation for being one of the safest cities in the United States. We want to keep it that way. However, we also need to become aware of the growing population and diversity in our town. Our current population estimate is 266,971. We anticipate being 300,000 as of 2030. Gilbert is becoming one of the largest municipalities in Arizona with median age of 33.8 and 67.8. Our town is growing, councilmembers. A growing city like ours also comes with new challenges. It becomes apparent to me that we need to know our new neighbors. Gilbert is one of the few towns in Phoenix Metropolis without the Human Relations Commission, HRC. We used to have the HRC but was scratched out by the council a few years ago. I'm not sure the reasons behind that. There's a greater urgency now more than ever to have the Human Relations Commission. The commission's sole purpose will be to promote mutual understanding and respect among the many groups of people who live and work and spend time in our community. The Human Relations Commission will advise the mayor and the city council and assist in the city department on ways to eliminate prejudice and discrimination in people from different cultural backgrounds can be made to feel at home in Gilbert, in our community, on ways and also on ways in which information and human relation topics can be disseminated, including conducting surveys and studies. Gilbert has exemplified what a great town looks like. The beauty, security, and sense of community continue to attract various people to our city. Change is inevitable. Because of this attraction, however, we have a responsibility to preserve what makes our town great as we experience growth. More than ever, we need to be proactive in ensuring that Gilbert's reputation is protected. And how can we do this, you may ask? We can do this by bringing the Human Relations Commission back. More importantly, we need our leaders to listen. We need them to put a constituent ahead of individual interest and I hereby just plead if you will consider the request. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Bus. Appreciate you being here. That moves us to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, there's been a request to pull items 13A, 26, 27, 28, and 29. With that, I'll move approval of items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Yes.
Thanks, Amy. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That moves us to Agenda Item 13A. Who pulled that?
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you for letting me just comment here on this. What we have before us for those following is a request to do a lease extension on a building that the town owns that's currently leased by the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce. My interest in this is in recommendation is that we put this property out to market. I think the best thing is to sell it altogether. I know there's some sentimental value there, but I think we can definitely get a higher lease rate for that. I know that the chamber already has been given some concessions on that and some further concessions just seem to be going in the wrong direction. Certainly support helping any of the tenants that we have and we'll, I'll definitely be supporting a lot of those here, but we've already given a lot of concessions. We're giving some more here and I just don't think we're going in the right direction with this particular piece of property. So I'd like to vote separately on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. We can vote separately on that. Is there a motion on Agenda Item 13A?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
No.
That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. If that moves us to Agenda Item 26.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, if you're okay, I'd like to just quickly comment on 26, 27, 28 together. It's really just the same thing. I've shared before, my concern with some of the federal grants. Wanted to vote separately on that, so I won't add anything more to that, but thank you for that.
Agenda items 26 and 27 is what you're referring to?
And 28.
28 is a contingency transfer, not a grant. Did you want to?
You know what? I'm sorry. That's correct. Just 27.
26 and 27?
26 and 27. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on Agenda Items 26 and 27? I think we can do those together. We have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember September. Please vote.
No.
That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 28. Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, again, wanted to vote separately on this. I've spoke ad nauseam about how much we've overpaid for this. To put even more on this is, I just don't think in our best interest. So I think this change order should come within savings of current construction budgets. Every private operator knows that those are common or within contingency. Typically, you have about a 3% contingency with a well-managed project for things like this that come up and this would easily fall within that. So I think we should just stay with good industry standards and practices, knowing that we've already overpaid tremendously for this particular project.
I disagree with the statement of overpayment, but we'll entertain a motion on Agenda Item 28.
Move to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Don't everybody fight over it. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
No.
That motion carries with a 5-2 vote and moves us to Agenda Item 29. I'm going to guess Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, how'd you know?
We're getting predictable.
So the, I'm going to support this tonight because I understand how important this is, but I think it's important that the committee that allocates this prioritizes our private sector over this. When we came forward with the budget, the argument was made that the town's doing great. We can raise spending. We can hire over 80 people. And if we're now going to change our tune and say now we're desperate, it's hard times, we don't have the money, I just don't think that that's a consistent time. I know time has passed, but the arguments were clearly made. The data was there. And so I think as this money is allocated, it really needs to be prioritized into our small business community, maybe some of the nonprofits or whoever's eligible under the specific provisions almost exclusively. The town really should, they know full well, we talked about it ad nauseam, what the true conditions of the economy were. And so now to say that we need, you know, extra money for that is just not consistent with what we had. So I will be supporting it tonight, but just hope that we prioritize it with what we've been communicating with our citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Want to make sure that the narrative is clear though. I'm not sure some of the statements that you've made are something that the council has advocated or made any statement about. And so I just want to be clear that that, we haven't had that discussion and I am looking forward to the opportunity for the committee or the subcommittee of the council to be able to have an open dialogue about that. But at this time, it's my understanding that we haven't even had any conversations. So we haven't had a meeting really since it's been allocated. So I take a little bit of issue with some of the statements that you made about whether we do or don't need them. We actually haven't had that conversation as a community and I'm excited that we will be able to. And I don't disagree with you that the business community is in need right now.
Mayor, my understanding is the town manager established a couple committees and one of those committees was to look at any COVID-related expenses that potentially could be reimbursable through these opportunities. Maybe it's a different bucket that they're looking for and that would be great, but I think these opportunities really are for the town and that would be an important distinction to make. And I appreciate you bringing that up because there's so many of these grants that are flying around and maybe that's an important distinction. So I appreciate you raising that.
Patrick, do you want to touch on the different bucket that Councilmember Taylor's referring to because it is not the CARES funds?
Yeah, Mayor Daniels. Councilman Taylor, that is correct. There are various funds that have been established at the federal level and at the state level for costs that municipalities are directly incurring through PPE and other directly COVID-related expenses that we are in the process of tracking and submitting for reimbursement for those costs. So this is a second set of funds or bucket of money, so to speak, to address additional issues within our community.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Looking forward to establishing the subcommittee in just a few minutes. So with that, is there a motion on Agenda Item 29?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That does complete the consent agenda and moves us to our public hearing items. Are there any requests on our public hearing items tonight? Lisa?
Yes, Mayor Daniels. We had one resident that's--
Lisa, we can't really hear your mic.
Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We did have one resident said they are in support of Item 36. It was Andrew Lukowski.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We will note that for the agenda. Any other requests from the council to speak on any of these public hearing items? Yes.
41, please.
Absolutely. Any others? All right. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 42. I will close the public hearing on those Agenda items and entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 41 and Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. This item, for those following along, is updating an ordinance or adding, amending an ordinance to allow for the sale or donation of surplus public safety equipment. And the town attorney and I had a little bit of conversation. I support all of it. I think it's great recognition. The one thing that we had a little dialogue on is relative to point number one, which is at the end of a really good honorable career to be able to buy their firearm for a dollar. And the question that I asked him is, well, what if it was just purchased in January? Would we have a violation of some gifts or enrichment ethics in the standards? And anyways, we explored that a little bit and I think we just need to make sure, and I think there's still a reason to support it and move forward and I do like that, but I think we do need to make sure that it is recognized as a gift. There is still equity in those firearms that's being purchased by a dollar. And typically, the officers at this particular level in their career could be making these procurement decisions. And so that's where you see some conflicts, but there is gift allowance within that. Maybe Chris can just clarify that. And as long as it's known and it's declared, it's transparent, I think that's appropriate to do. And Chris, I don't know if you wanted to add anything on that, but--
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Taylor, that's correct. The town personnel rules to provide for the ability of a department to recognize a retiring employee with a gift up to a value of $400. So this would fall under that. And it's in compliance, as the code talks about, with the statute that does allow that. The idea for a dollar is to have some type of consideration, but it certainly would fall within the retirement gift procedures that the town has already approved.
So I just want to make sure that the language is there so there's protection that someone doesn't get falsely accused of enrichment or, you know, giving themselves something and they know that it's falling under that provision. So Mayor, that's really it. I think it's great and I'm glad that this is brought forward by town staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any other comments on Agenda Item 41? I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 41 and entertain a motion.
So moved. Approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That does complete our public hearing items and moves us to our administrative items. We have a presentation on the 2020 Gilbert Benchmark Report. I believe that is coming from, hold please, I see you, Carlos. Glad you're here, Carlos. Is this your first time presenting to council? We're not as intimidating, I hope, as Kelly probably prepped you for.
We really like Carlos. Take it easy on him.
Sounds like we're keeping him, so it's good.
Do I, is it good? All right. Good evening, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Anderson, and councilmembers. I'm Carlos Lampkin with the Office of Management and Budget and I am pleased to present the 2020 Gilbert Benchmark Report. This is our fourth iteration of the report, which is conducted every two years. This data and these benchmarks give us an indication of our service delivery relative to other municipalities. They highlight areas of excellence as well as areas where there are opportunities for improvement. This evening, I'll tell you a bit about the report's framework and show you just a few examples contained within the report. In the 2020 report, we included 75 benchmarks across eight major functional areas, including 24 departments and divisions capturing 42 benchmark communities in 13 states total all around the US. This first benchmark indicates that Gilbert is the top-ranking municipality for percentage of residents who believe they are treated fairly, increasing 2% from 2018. Here we can see the 2019 single-family home permits has decreased in the last two years, indicating that residential home development has slowed while population overall has increased. Overall, our fire response times have increased over the past two years. We anticipated the completion of Fire Station 9 would reduce average response times and the data supports this conclusion. Gilbert has also increased the percentage of utility customers who receive electronic statements. We believe this increase is due to the implementation of a new customer portal. Overall, Gilbert's diversion rate has decreased slightly since the 2018 report, likely due to increased tonnage of household trash produced. You can find the report on the, well, let me just read this. I'm sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2020 Gilbert Benchmark Report. The full report is contained in the council packet and also accessible on the Gilbert AZ website via the Management and Budget webpage. And I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Carlos. I had the chance to review this. We emailed the benchmark report and excited about some of the findings and I think it's a testament to the hard work of our entire organization. So thank you to Team Gilbert, who's in, some of you are here, some of you are watching online. We appreciate this and the compilation is really helpful for us to tell the Gilbert story. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. We're going to give you a air high five. Great job.
Thank you all very much.
All right. That moves us to Agenda Item 44, and that's a presentation and discussion about the formation of a council subcommittee to discuss and make recommendations for potential uses of the Arizona CARES funds that have been provided as part of the state's allocation.
Mayor, members of the council, we don't have a presentation per se on that topic, just an open discussion about the creation of a council subcommittee and appointment of members and then we will meet and begin that process of determining what the need is in our community and how you would like to see those funds allocated.
And just because I think it's going to be a topic of consideration, what's the timeframe for the work of the subcommittee and the expectation of when the recommendations will come forward?
Mayor, members of the council, that's a great question. Funds themselves have been received by the town and you took formal action to accept them tonight. We did allocate a good portion of those dollars. Let me take a step back. Governor Ducey, when he allocated those dollars to the cities and towns in Arizona, put some restrictions on the use of those funds, that they should be specifically used for public safety, police, fire, 911 systems, EMS systems, and any expense within those categories was acceptable. And so we have accepted those funds and used a portion of those to pay for expenses in the fiscal year 20 budget. And then the remaining funds will be expended for those eligible expenses in the fiscal year 21 budget. That frees up the $29.2 million, which are technically general fund dollars in nature because the other, the general fund dollars were supplanted by the CARES funds received by the state. There's no timeframe on when we need to expend those by. I think the biggest pressing matter is the urgency of the need within our community would dictate the speed at which the subcommittee would want to operate by. We've got a team of staff members ready in the various areas to assist that committee and can move as quickly as they would like to move.
So what I anticipate will occur is that there'll be a period of pretty intense committee work in order to determine the best-- work in order to determine the best, best ways to expend those dollars to benefit the community as a whole. And so that's really going to be, the recommendations will be coming forward from the subcommittee. I would like to suggest three individuals for the subcommittee, either for discussion or for approval by the council, and that would be Councilmember Young Kaprowski, Councilmember Scott September, and Councilmember Amy Yentes to serve as part of that committee. So if you have questions or if someone has a dire desire to participate in that or would like to move forward, I hope they'd accept. I think they might.
I think those would be great recommendations, Mayor. I'm all for it. Here, here. How many people do you envision being on the committee? In terms of subject matter experts in certain areas, did you have some thoughts on that?
I believe it would just be the three, as we do typically with subcommittees of the council, it's the three council members assisted by staff.
Council Subcommittee, okay.
But I absolutely could see scenarios where they have individuals from the community or different business organizations and others to come forward and present to that committee if the committee so desires, but that would be really up to the committee and the staff.
Perfect, thank you. That'd be great.
All right. I think we need a motion to create the subcommittee and to appoint the three, do we?
So moved.
I want to follow the code. That true? Chris? Okay. We have a so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And the three of you speak now or forever hold your peace because you have some intense committee work ahead of you.
You've got 20 hours of work laid on you.
You guys are good? All right. Councilmember Yentes, this is your last chance.
I would be honored, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Terrific. All right, boards, commissions, and committee reports. Anything from our council? Anything from the Military and Veterans Advisory Committee has been exceptionally active. I feel like there has been maybe an announcement that should be made based on a letter that we received. We haven't had that conversation since it happened on Gilbert's birthday.
No, Mayor, and just to update the public on it, we did several, well, actually just about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, we, we made a formal request and took some initiative to contact the ship sponsor for the USS Arizona, SSN 803, which is a new submarine that's being built. The Secretary of Navy announced it in December of this past year. I'm very pleased to announce that on Gilbert Centennial, the ship sponsor, Nikki Stratton, did contact the city and formally request the city or the town accept her offer to make Gilbert the hometown of the USS Arizona. There's a very widespread set of options that are available to the town as far as our level of participation for this, but the initial ideas are we're going to wrap, we're going to wrap up not only the submarine USS Arizona, but also take on some of the ceremonial opportunities with the battleship USS Arizona. And so we've been meeting pretty much weekly to identify what we're able to do. We've gotten support from Navy League Phoenix as well as Navy League National and across the country with Navy leadership. So it's a, literally, it's a no-cost opportunity for us to be able to do something that's of national and international significance. Looking forward to be able to present. I saw some of the rough drafts of the PowerPoint presentation that we'll be presenting to council with my, my hope and that council accepts this offer from Nikki Stratton and proceeds to proceed on with a very long-term and very, I think, beneficial, something that Gilbert naturally meshes up with, with an opportunity like this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Spence. Appreciate that. Any other boards, commissions, or committee reports? All right, that moves us to our policy item, Agenda Item 46. Any discussion or is there a motion?
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Moved to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Any future meetings? If you have an agenda item that you wish to include in a future agenda, please fill out the request card and get your signatures. We can do this. Communications, report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In the, over six weeks since the last time we met, we've had quite a bit of activity occur. If you'll bear with me, I want to recognize some departments within the town and some individuals who have recently been recognized for the exemplary work they've done for our organization and for our community. Starting with our Office of Digital Government, they were awarded the 2020 Charmin Stein Award for Storytelling Changemakers by Results for America, which is a partner in What Works Cities and Bloomberg Philanthropies. They also received Government Social Media's 2020 Social Media Team of the Year. Very proud of the work they've done. They have, I will forward some reports to you. They have, during this pandemic and this period of time, been handling a very heavy load across our social media channels. In the month of June alone, they had over 7 million impacts, impressions over our channels and at a time that couldn't be more critical to get information out to our community with the many questions that they have. We also received a, recognized with an ICMA Certificate of Excellence in Performance Management. ICMA stands for the International City Managers Association. It's the highest level of recognition government can receive in its efforts by staff and work to maintain a focus on data-driven management, even in the face of the ongoing pandemic conditions. I believe this is the fourth year we've won that award, and some of that effort is, was presented to you by Carlos tonight, and I would encourage you, if you have not gone online, to look at the entire performance benchmark report, you should. There's a lot of great information contained in there. Upcoming events, we also have a open house this Thursday, in which our fire chief and other personnel are going to answer questions from the public about the proposed expansion of our ambulance service here in Gilbert. There's information on our website on how you can participate. That will be done virtually, and that can be found at gilbertaz.gov/fire. And then lastly, the American, I'm sorry, the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association held their Best of the Best Award Ceremony, and we just found out today that the Gilbert Regional Park won Outstanding Facility Award for Populations Over 100,000. And in regards to that, over the summer, you may have heard Phase 1B, the next expansion phase of the park, was completed, and we brought online 16 pickleball courts, six tennis courts, and two basketball courts. And in early fall, probably sometime around early October, we anticipate completion of the seven-and-a-half-acre lake, the amphitheater, six sand volleyball courts, and a 10-acre lawn as part of that project. So it was great to see the recognition for our regional park at a statewide level. Jody Becker, a park ranger supervisor, also won the Park Professional of the Year Award, and if you've ever interacted with Jody Becker, she is a wonderful member of our team and is beloved by the patrons that interact with her in our park system. We also had a volunteer, Betty Gannon, recognized as the Volunteer of the Year Award for her service to our community and our park system. And then lastly, and if you see him, he's already got trouble managing his ego, so don't stroke it too much, but Robert Carmona, our Parks and Recreation Director, was recognized as the Outstanding Professional of the Year Award by the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association. Robert's actually a very humble individual, but does excellent work for us, and that's great recognition of him as well as his entire team. That's all my report for tonight, Mayor.
That was a busy six weeks. All right, any current events from the council? Yep, Councilmember Taylor?
Eric, can I, can I take a couple of minutes just to talk about the elections? I want to just recognize and thank those people that stepped forward to run. It's very important. A lot of the times, the local candidates get ignored. I think we had about a 30% turnout, but there was a lot of hard work from those. Everyone that ran, whether they won or not, Bus, I'm glad you're here, and Tyler, Lynn King Smith, Bill, that's a lot of, that's a lot of hard work. We've all, most of us have done that. Maybe you guys are going to run in the future. It's a lot of hard work. There's your warning. And congratulations to those that either won outright, Scott and Kathy Tilke did a great job. Congratulations to them. And just want to reemphasize how important it is to continue to participate. I think there's a couple more days, Lisa, to register to vote for the November election. And I was trying to find the date real quick. I couldn't find it, but I think we've got a couple more weeks. And just encourage everybody to pay attention and register, get educated. We have a runoff for mayor. Bridgette Peterson and Matt Nelson are going to the runoff, and these races really matter, and it's just important, if you're not already registered, to register, get yourself educated, meet the candidates. I think people will be very surprised how accessible we are. Sometimes they think that they, it's, we don't pick up our phone or we don't want to hear, but I know all the candidates want to hear from you, they want to talk to you, and I just encourage everyone to get educated, participate in our local election, and congratulate everybody who ran and those who, who won and are, we're looking forward to your service here in the town. Mayor, thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any other current events from the council? I have a few. So I realized at the last council meeting that I actually missed an opportunity to talk about our fiscal year '20 accomplishments. I usually do that at the end of every year, and I didn't do that this last year, or this last June at our final council meeting for fiscal year '20. So I wanted to just touch on the highlights. This is just a very small fraction of the things that have been accomplished in the town of Gilbert over the last year, and I wanted to make sure that you all had note of that. The first is that the town is one of 41 cities to have received a AAA credit rating from all three rating agencies, one of 41 out of 21,000 cities, towns, and villages. So it's a huge accomplishment for this council and for staff and for all the hard work that they put in to ensure that we're sticking to our financial policies and helping us stay aligned as an organization. We did make significant contributions to PSPRS, the Public Safety Retirement System, and have made great progress in making sure that we paid down that debt. And again, that was a lot of fiscal restraint and effort. Once again, the town of Gilbert in the Tempe survey that the city of Tempe, it feels like it gives it more credibility when another city does the actual testing, but Gilbert continues to have the lowest cost of service of any municipality in the valley. So I think that's an important and significant contribution as well. We again are, have been ranked the second safest community in the United States and safest in Arizona. Our fire department earned accreditation this last year, and that was a multi-year effort and another great accomplishment. Our Parks and Rec team opened two new parks, both Desert Sky and Gilbert Regional, and those are being loved on a very regular basis. And so maintaining and keeping those up to date is, is another tall task, but something that our team is totally up for. We have the lowest combined sales tax of any city in the valley and the lowest property tax rates of any city in the valley. What I want to emphasize in that is low is good, but value is even better, and I think our residents do receive a tremendous value from that. The University of Arizona started the first integrated Bachelors of Nursing at the university building in downtown Gilbert, and that has been going extremely well for them. And I just wanted to touch on, since 2001, we have an ongoing fiscal performance goal, and it's been documented that we've saved $37 million in savings through refinancing with a better credit rating. We've saved $67 million in debt reduction through early payments and have saved $9.1 million based on our zero-based budget practices. And so I think it's just a significant accomplishment. Again, that's a very, very small fraction of the many things that were accomplished in fiscal year '20, and at some point, I'm going to compile what the last decade has, has brought to the community, things like the Heritage District and others, and so many things that I'm so proud of and really proud to be part of this team. I'll ask the council to pass this down, and I'll just read a letter that I have written, and I'm going to do so with maybe some excitement and not sadness, or try anyway. "I have loved serving the town of Gilbert for more than 11 years. I have worked alongside amazing people, staff, and council members, regional and school leaders, business owners, volunteers, faith groups, and friends and neighbors, all working to make Gilbert a better place to live, work, and play. Effective immediately following the adjournment of this meeting, I am going to be resigning from the office of mayor of the town of Gilbert. And I'd really like to thank my family, especially those who have supported me, and my four favorite Gilbert residents, Ethan, Drew, Ty, and Kate Daniels. Thank you to all of you who have put your trust in me to lead. You have been patient and generous, and I will always be grateful for this really remarkable experience. I have the utmost confidence in the council to continue the work that we've done. And again, I just want to reiterate to all of our staff members how incredibly grateful I am for my interactions with each of you. So congratulations on an amazing community, and it's time to pass the torch. So again, great confidence in each of you, so thank you." With that, this meeting is adjourned. With that, this meeting is adjourned.